Good evening, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners here to have a public hearing on the Thurston Conservation District rates and charges. This is a public hearing to consider approving a system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District on properties in those portions of unincorporated Thurston County, municipalities of Lacey, Olympia, Tam Water, and those portions of the municipalities of Rainier, Tenino, and Yellm within the Thurston Conservation Districts as their boundaries established in 1947 for collection in 2019 through 2023. The purpose is that Thurston County is seeking public input on the proposed system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation Districts. And so while we have your attention, here's how it goes. There's a sign in sheet still in the back for those who wish to still sign in, and as you sign in, they'll bring it forward here. When you come up here, you'll see that there's three minutes on the clock to your right, to my left, and it'll count down from three minutes to zero, and when it gets to zero, it has this kind of "ah" sound, it's kind of a microwave gun with your popcorn sound, right? But if you're mid-thought, we want you to finish your thought, but at the same time, I want you to start finishing up, I'll start prompting you. So it can go over just a tad or so, but I'm going to ask you to kind of bring it to a closure of some sort. You cannot donate your three minutes to anybody else, it's your three minutes, we want to hear from each individual as you are here to be able to speak on your own. And then when you come to the podium, I ask you to state your first and last name and generally where you're at from the county, where you live, what have you. And then I ask every single person in the audience to turn your cell phones down to silence or off or whatever, so that you give respect to the person at the podium without having any interruptions. And so with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to the county manager, Ramirez Chagas, to give a little bit of background, and he's going to turn it over to Sarah, and then I'll get us going forward with the portion of the testimony and open it up to the public, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is the second public hearing, and the reason as to why we are holding a second public hearing, because the public hearing that we held on September 25th didn't have the appropriate public notification, and that is the reason why we went through the second public hearing. So the notification for this public hearing included an advertisement at the Niskali Valley News on November 9th, and we advertised on the Olympian twice, on November 2nd and November 9th. We also posted a physical notice of this public hearing, the Thurston County Courthouse here on the first floor, the Tam Water Library, the Yellm Co-op, the Rainier Post Office, the Tenino Post Office, the West Side Co-op, the Olympia Library, Lacey Library, on the East Side Co-op. And that meets the requirements of posting to announce this public hearing. The comments received on the September 25th, 2018 is still valid, in addition to the comments that we have received so far and the public testimony that we will receive tonight. So on September 25th, we received a combined of 195 comments, of which 191 were in support of the rates and charges and four were against it. Leading to the November 20th, today's public hearing, we received 56 additional comments. 56 were in support and zero against it. So combined between all the two public hearings, we received 251 comments, of which four were against it. The deadline to provide a public testimony, in written testimony, I'm sorry, was yesterday, Monday, November 19th, at 5:00 in the afternoon. However, we received 18, what we consider late comments. During the day, we received additional 18 comments. And the 18 comments included seven, they were opposed, five, they were suggesting the commissioners to hold and wait to make another decision, and six out of the 18 to approve the rates and charges. And that is my report for you.
Okay, Sarah, do you have anything? And then I got two more other comments after that, but go ahead, Sarah. Just introduce yourself and take off.
Great, well, thank you guys so much for having us again here this evening. Again, you know me, I'm Sarah Moorhead, I am the current interim executive director at the Thurston Conservation District, and also a new and beginning farmer in a property just south of Tenino in unincorporated Thurston County, and I'm happy to be here to talk about rates and charges. I'm going to walk through really briefly the presentation that was provided at the September 25th public hearing, as it's material that has been seen and posted on our websites. I just want to keep it succinct so we can get to a public comment and then open it up for any additional questions that folks may have for me. And if you're ready, I'll continue.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Great. So folks are fairly aware at this point of what Thurston Conservation District's programs and services are, and our intent to be a voluntary and non-regulatory approach to conservation of natural resources, private landowner properties. We want to create healthy ecosystems, we want to educate and empower people to be good stewards of their land. Thurston Conservation District, again, was incorporated in 1947. Initially, after the Dust Bowl era, Conservation Districts focused on soil and water conservation primarily, on working lands, and that has continued to adapt and diversify due to the different land makeup, land use types, and needs of each community. Each district has their really unique ability to adapt and change to meet those needs. This is just an overview of our programs and services, again, to address water quality, supporting producers, farmland preservation, preservation of habitat and protection of ecosystems, rural and urban land stewardship, climate change, and environmental education. Again, our basic services at the district are funded in a variety of different ways. That comes from state, local, and federal grants, and then the majority of our revenue from about 1993 to 2017 was from local assessment dollars that were $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre for every parcel over five acres. It was collected via Thurston County's property taxes, and that was the historical method of collecting that revenue to reimburse the district for the services provided to the community. Grant funding, as we all know, varies in duration, availability from funder, and fluctuates dramatically, and is not typically, it's more project-specific and not typically the type of revenue that can sustain and grow an organization, which is why we are seeking this base funding in the rates and charges proposal. Today, it implements a more reliable source of local revenue, as well as provides a lot of match, not only grant-riding capacity, but also match, local match for those state and federal funds that often require you to have some sort of leg in the game financially otherwise. So we more than double this rates and charges revenue with these competitive grant sources or the assessment in prior years. So RCW 8908.405 was the legislation that included the rates and charges component where the prior assessment had been. This is very similar in structure where it allows districts to charge up to $5 per parcel here in Thurston County, and up to 10 cents per acre. That's where the statutory cap has counties with the population that Thurston Falls in, which is under 480,000. There are other nuances to the statute as well, like a cap on commercial designated forest land at $3. The transition from our rates and charges-based funding to the assessment has come for a variety of reasons. One is district assessments went through a period of being challenged legally for the appropriate use of that collection type for the conservation work and services provided. This is a much more appropriate source of funding and allows the district to calculate not only the direct costs recovery to each individual parcel, but also the indirect benefit to watersheds as a whole. The assessment that we utilized prior, again, is geared towards increasing property values and making improvements on each individual property that is assessed. In developing the rates and charges, we went through a process of defining our key programs, utilizing our strategic plan, seeking public and partner comments on that, and then our Board of Supervisors and lead staff went through an opportunity to, or an exercise to really allocate those indirect and direct expenses that each of those programs and services, including our strategic plan, included, and that's how the base rates were built. This is a very small table again, and I have handouts in the back for anyone that didn't receive one last time, just about how that service cost is really generated, the direct and indirect way that that's calculated, how you look at the different land use types per parcel and per acre. And again, just, this was pulled out of our FCS group, 2017 rate study report, numbers maybe have slightly shifted as we're, you know, revising things for this 2019 year in terms of chargeable parcels and chargeable acres in Thurston County, but that's the ballpark. This is an example of the calculated rates and revenue reconciliation where it shows the land use types, and then the amount per acre and per parcel. Again, another small table where we have it on paper for those that would like to see it. When we did our initial rate study report in 2017, the rates that we calculated to recover the costs of the services and programs that we provide were above the statutory cap in RCW 8908. So part of what we did in the study was to scale that down, and so we will still need to continue to seek out the state, federal, and local grant funding to continue to support and fully implement our strategic plan goals. And this is another, this is the land use categories and the parcels per acre and per parcel charges and rates as they were scaled down to meet that statutory requirement of no more than $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre minus, again, that designated resource forest land. This is a little bit of information about what a year without this base funding has done for the district, which has included a loss of a variety of technical staffing positions that provide these services. Again, our organization does cost share implementation and project, conservation project implementation, but a bulk of the services that we do are provide education and site, onsite assistance for landowners, so it's really driven by the expertise of the humans on our staff, being able to relay that information and guide people through, you know, regulatory hurdles or other framework site-specific to their property. Loss of a permanent executive director and vital administrative support, something we're hoping to build up, increase our operational support and stability in the coming year that can support the growth of more technical employees and services. Loss of local match, which has sort of stifled our ability to write state, federal, and local grants, as well as have those local revenue sources to provide that match to continue growing our budget. Loss of countywide services to landowners, we're definitely constrained in certain geographies of the county that we have existing grant funding that funds certain types of assistance, certain types of projects for certain land use types and certain landowner types, whereas before, we were able to serve anybody, anywhere, anytime, with any sort of question or concern or issue relating to natural resources on their property. Again, this is also a loss of funding for local cost share, as well as the shellfish protection district funding, which is a partnership program between Thurston County Environmental Health, Thurston County, ourselves, and other local partners that do shellfish recovery in Henderson and Niskali Reach. And then, again, just limit for landowners who are dealing with regulatory referrals. The district is the voluntary point organization for any landowner that is experiencing the referral process from either Thurston County or folks like Department of Ecology. We have a great partnership relationship with both of these regulatory entities to try and provide the landowner with as much support to correct issues, find funding to implement projects, to reduce pollution rather than going through regulatory framework. So in summary, again, the Conservation District Board of Supervisors created the resolution that we passed earlier this year, adopting a system of rates and charges, which meets that statutory cap of up to $5 a parcel and 10 cents per acre annually, and is requesting that for a five-year period of time. If anybody has any questions, I'm available for that, and also have more presentations if anybody would like any.
Any questions for Sarah?
I don't know. No, I think we're not here for discussions as much as we are to listen, is that right?
Yeah, right. Just in case you had one for Sarah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All righty, we'll get on with the public testimony portion of this. Just to kind of rephrase a couple things, the assignment sheets are in the back, and just for fear of those who change their mind during mid-course and would like to come up, I'll call you up by show of hand and bring you to the podium individually, so if you hear something you'd like to respond to. The other thing is I ask everybody not to boo, cheer, applause, or anything like that, just like with the cell phones, give the people the right at the podium to be able to speak in a format that be able to be respectful, right? And so if you know me, with this kind of large of a crowd, I'll call the first name, and then I'll call the second name. That way, the person that's in the second-name slot can have, if you're in the middle of the seating, or you need to get your papers together, you got to get that little bit of notice to fall in behind the person that's ahead of you, okay? So the first two people's names I'm going to call in order to get us going is TJ Johnson is the first person, and the other person behind that is Deborah Shapiro. So hello, TJ, how you doing, buddy?
I'm happy to be first, but I was actually first on the same sheet, if that matters.
We're going to go right down the list, we're going to get everybody, I promise.
Great, thank you. TJ Johnson, I'm a full-time farmer in the unincorporated part of Thurston County, I've been here for 28 years. I'm not going to recreate my testimony from the September meeting, I will say my mind has not changed, I still encourage you to adopt rates and charges, but I will tell you that the lack of funding at the district is continuing to have real consequences for small producers. Back in October, they suspended the use of their rental equipment, things like poultry processing, manure spreaders that a lot of us depend on, because they didn't have the staff to take care of them and check them out. And that put a hurt on a lot of small producers, and that will continue. They did make some exceptions to get some of us through the holiday season processing our turkeys and chickens, but as of the end of this month, those systems go away until there's funding reestablished. The other thing that's been a real impact for small farmers and producers is suspension of soil testing. This is the time of year that small crop farmers like myself would normally test our soil and work with the district staff on recommendations, and with some exceptions for producers who are in certain geographic areas of the county where they have some grant funding to do that, most of the county is not able to run their soil tests through the district at this point. And again, that's a hardship for us because this is the time of year, we like to see what's going on in our soil to get ourselves set up for next year. So we need the funding back so that we can have the people back and the equipment back, and we can get on with the partnerships that help small producers like myself be successful. So I encourage you to adopt rates and charges as proposed.
Thank you for your words there, TJ. So the next person is Deborah Shapiro, and then after that is Esther Cronenberg. There you go, bring it down, there you go. All right, Deborah, you have the floor, go ahead.
Greetings. My name is Deborah Shapiro, I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband Vincent Schwent. We own Indigo Farms, a 57-acre parcel out on Steamboat Island Road with four and a half acres in certified organic production. We sell at the farmers market, we're a small, diverse market farm. I would like to personally thank the Conservation District because we've only owned our farm about five years, and Sarah was at our farm numerous times, we didn't know what we were doing, and she was so helpful and had so many good ideas, it would be criminal not to have her available in the way that she was available to us. So I'm going to read what I wrote as quickly as I can here. So I support adopting the rates and changes for funding the Thurston Conservation District in 2019. We have, I just want to add a little more personal stuff than what I wrote, because we had, we have helped launch, we're a little bit older, so we brought in young farmers, and I've lost, helped launch three young farmers, and they need these services. We don't know how we could have helped them move forward with a whole community of different services to launch them forward. If you want good organic food, you've got to support these people. So I've used the district's expertise to help in farm planning, especially soil testing, equipment use. Beyond the personal benefits of the Thurston Conservation District, I especially appreciate the vital work they do in the community, helping to conserve farmland for our county's future. The small farmers of Thurston County are facing a crisis, 50% of farmland lost in the past five years between '01 and '07. We cannot afford to lose anymore. I greatly appreciate that the Conservation District has enrolled 1,000 acres in the South Sound Farm Link Program to help transition working lands between generations, which is extremely difficult to do. And I have to tell you, I've never seen people work harder than these young farmers. They're up at 4:00 in the morning, they need every little bit of help they can get. So young farmers need help getting access to farmland particularly, you save the farmers, you save the farmland. So that's my motto. So we need those young farmers, and we need that to help them. The Conservation District plays a vital role in ensuring that there will be enough farms to feed us, children, and grandchildren in the years to come. Besides this, they also do vital work protecting habitat, restoring shorelines, wetlands, implementing green infrastructure, and low-impact development practices, restoring native plants, and educating thousands...
Go ahead, finish your thought real quick.
...of school kids every year about the environment. I will gladly play, pay the rates on my taxes for the Conservation District. I wish all the taxes the county collected were put to good use, as such good use as that. It's unthinkable that we could lose this valuable organization because of political motives. I urge you to vote for the Thurston County Conservation District. Thank you.
Thank you for your words there, Deborah, that's great. So Esther Cronenberg is next, and then after that, is it Carl Goss, Carl? Oh, Carol, I'm sorry, Carol, I'm so sorry. No, no, my bad reading, my penmanship, go ahead.
Esther Cronenberg from West Olympia. You already know from the thousands who voted for Paul Pickett for the board, and the hundreds who have written and testified in support of the Conservation District, that the overwhelming majority of Thurston County citizens want a fully-funded TCD. The only people who spoke against funding were those who believed the lies of Glenn Morgan, whose credibility is severely compromised after he was recently exposed to committing election fraud, trying to deceive voters here and around the state through fraudulent campaign literature. The right choice to fund TCD is clear, but there's another reason for you to do so. It's a matter of legacy and what you want to be remembered for. Will this be the board that ignored the will of the citizens and farmers, and the needs of this community, and killed the Conservation District? That's one choice. But looking back on the last 70 years of the Conservation District's history, and all the accomplishments that continue to benefit our community now and into the future, it's clear that you could leave a positive legacy of being the board who, despite the current turmoil, was able to look another 70 years down the road, when all of us will be gone, to see and ensure a vibrant county sustained by a Conservation District that was still actively and effectively protecting our natural resources for our children and grandchildren and beyond. As men of integrity, I trust you will vote for that positive future by voting to fund the TCD. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Esther. Carol, and then after that is Sue Brennstein?
Thank you for another opportunity to come out and support the Conservation District. I want to add my voice to everyone else who has been so positive in all the great work that the TCD has been doing, and I specifically want to commend the work of Sarah Moorhead, interim executive director. As you're aware, the TCD has been through a long and protracted legal and leadership battle with board members Eric Johnson and Richard Mankmeyer. This devastation has and continues to undermine the viability and financial stability of this vital and valuable organization. Why, I can only speculate. During this time, Sarah has capably helmed the various programs and managed projects involving many staff and volunteers. When I've attended community meetings such as this, I've been very impressed by her in-depth presentations of the current and future works of the TCD. Sarah is extremely knowledgeable, articulate, and an enthusiastic steward of the TCD and its numerous functions in Thurston County. This is a tumultuous political climate, and it's a fast-growing area, and the TCD requires a steady hand and head. Any organization is only as good as the staff and the leadership that work on its behalf, and I can state with certainty that Sarah is a remarkable representative and spokesperson of the TCD. And unless she leaves of her own accord, if she's removed, in my opinion, it would be a specious covering for undisclosed political shenanigans. It would be a huge loss. I can go on and talk about how my husband and I are now on hold regarding getting our soil tested, and I'm very sad to hear about the plant sale that's canceled for 2019. That has been an ongoing event for many years. And coffee with the Conservation District has been a really important part of the community. I've watched resident farmers ask so many questions of Nora White, I can only say good things. As a property owner and resident, I'm very concerned that the lack of funding and internal turmoil is imploding the functioning and any possible future of this important resource, and I just hope it's not deliberate. With lack of funding, services are impacted. When services are impacted by being discontinued or diminished, the relevance to the communities the TCD helps is weakened and will ultimately fail. Without functioning leadership serving the mission, the organization will fail. Without reliable, responsive, knowledgeable, and dedicated managers and staff, the organization will fail. Do not fail this important and worthy community service, which for 70 years provides services to so many. Please say yes to the rates and charges proposal, and supply the TCD with commissioners and board members of sound judgment who know how to support managers and staff in doing their best work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carol, for your words.
And I've got written comments.
Okay, yeah, give them to the county manager there, sure. So Sue, you're next, yeah, come on up. And then after that is Annabelle Kirchner, did I say that correctly, Annabelle? Sure, go ahead, Sue, you have the floor.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, all of the attendees. My name is Sue Brennsteiner.
Oh, sorry.
I am speaking as a citizen and property owner from Thurston County. This is fairly short, but fairly direct. I encourage you to vote yes for Thurston Conservation District rates and charges. I believe this vote is one of the very most important votes you will make. I believe that because supporting a longstanding and proven organization that works with all of our community, including our local farmers and our children, and helps all of us appreciate and apply best practices of land use, is of such very great importance to our food and our water and our environment. Your votes, your three votes for the Conservation District's rate and charges will provide an enormous impact for this county's, our county's, sustainable development going forward. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you so much, Sue. Annabelle, yeah, how you doing? And then after that is Stuart Smith, is Stuart Smith here? Okay, so you're next after Annabelle.
Thanks for having me once again. I'm Annabelle Kirchner, I've lived in the county for about nine years, I'm a longtime resident of Washington State. I highly value clean air, clean water, and the work that our small farms are doing. They rely, as people have told you, on the Conservation District to do this. As you have seen, there is a huge amount of public support for the Conservation District. A few people, Eric Johnson, Glenn Morgan, and a few others, have tried to stir up dirt on the Conservation District. They've been working at this for the last year and a half. I know that some of you are close... I know that some of you are close personal friends with these people. What they're saying about the Conservation District being ineffective and not law-abiding is untrue. Glenn Morgan's ability to lie was exemplified by the fraudulent campaign flyer he sent out, which even made national news. But you personally need to stand up and vote for these rates and charges to distance yourself from the kind of dirty politics that Glenn Morgan has tried to foster in this county. I urge all of you to listen to the residents of the county and not to your close personal friends, who have tried to undermine the good people, who have done hard work at the Conservation District. Vote for the rates and charges, or we will assume that you, Glenn Ford, and others are hand in glove in the dirty politics in the county.
Thank you for coming tonight, Annabelle. Stuart, you're next, and after Stuart is Ron Holtcamp.
Good evening all, Stuart Smith.
Sir, can you bring the microphone up?
Very good.
There you go.
I can't hear.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I got you, go ahead.
Okay, good. Stuart Smith, I live in the northwest part of Thurston County, Wayster Bay Area. I'm in full support of the Thurston Conservation District, and I support the proposed rates and charges, and I ask that you do also. We've heard from a number of farmers here. I'm not a farmer, live in an unincorporated area, and as a result, I may not ever make direct use of some of the facilities and programs that the Conservation District offers. For example, I have no need for a manure spreader or poultry processing stuff. But by golly, I sure support the work they do because I know that if we have a healthy environment and sound farming, and that I will be better off as a citizen as well. I look at the mission statement for the county as I walked in, and how do we create a community that promotes health, commerce, and environmental protection with transparency and accountability? Well, we taxpayers have to step up to the plate and pay for that, to make that happen. So I'm willing to do that. I think the amounts are reasonable, and I'm willing to pay my fair share on that with the idea that we'll have great benefit down the road from it as well. In fact, I'm just going to end by saying, I think that paying taxes is an act of patriotism, and I'm ready to do my part. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, sir, for your words there. So that was Sue, and then so Ron? Yeah, there you go. How you doing? And then after Ron is Paul Pickett.
Good evening. My name's Ron Holtcamp, a citizen of Olympia. And like Stuart, I'm not a farm owner. My family before me certainly was, but as a result of many things, I ended up being an urbanite. I've been a resident, property owner, and taxpayer in Thurston County for over 45 years. For me, $5 a year is less than a fifth of 1% of my property tax bill. The Thurston Conservation District, in my opinion, has been a penthouse service at a bargain basement price. I encourage your support of the foundation that is needed by the TCD. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your words there, sir. So that was Ron, Paul Pickett, you're next, and after that is John Florrie? Florrie? Did I say that correctly? John Florrie? Sure. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, thank you. Well, here we are at the end of a long journey. It started over a year and a half ago. We've had hearings, and then had hearings again, and testimony, had testimony again, a complex, annoyingly complex process. But we're getting near the end. And I guess, you know, you've heard a lot of testimony. I guess what I'd just like to add is, as a supervisor with the Thurston County, with the Thurston Conservation District, and as a past elected official, facing this decision, I'd probably look at three things. I would say, is this good for the county? Is this what the residents and taxpayers of the county want? And is the money going to be handled wisely? And I think from what you're hearing and from the comments, the majority of the people in the county want this. It's a good thing. Is it good for the county? I think this is an amazing opportunity for the county board of commissioners to make an investment, to ask your taxpayers, or ratepayers in this case, to make an investment in our county. Because that investment will return, not just to the farmers, it supports our local agriculture, and I firmly believe in having a stable, sustainable agricultural base in Thurston County. I've used the farm services, I bought into the... I have a cold, so I'm not going to remember everything I mean to say. Anyway, I've bought a lot of vegetables from this county over the years. But also, you know, our environment. Because I think when you're investing in farms that are cleaner, that conserve soil and water and air, when you're investing in landowners, you're investing in our creeks, you're also investing in our salmon, you're investing in our shellfish industry, in our residential or recreational shellfish, you're investing in, even in orchid survival, in kind of a few steps removed. So I think it's an amazing opportunity to invest in the county. As far as the money being spent wisely, I'm certainly on the board to make sure that the Conservation District does that. You know about the letter I sent. Since then, the board has passed a resolution supporting, in a more general way, the same principle. We'll continue to ensure that the money is spent wisely. I just talked to a representative of the state auditor today, who's beginning a special, a three-year audit, looking back over the last three years, one of the more in-depth kinds of audits that can occur. So there's going to be that piece of information. The board's had a volunteer come forward to help do some auditing. And if we get the rates and charges, I want to continue that process. I think there's a great opportunity here to bring in the best knowledge from all over the state and make our Conservation District even better than it ever was before. So I encourage you to pass this, I hope you will, and thank you for your time.
You bet, Paul. Thank you so much. So after Paul is John. Hello, sir, how you doing? And then Al Wald. Go ahead, John.
Hi, I'm John Florrie. I'm a retired large animal veterinarian. I've been here 32 years in this county, serviced a lot of new farms, a lot of old farms. I came in '86 to the shoots and started working. I found within a couple months the Conservation District. They had one staff member. I kept her butt working. And so I found out there's a lot of people out in the farms, and it's not the new small ones. A lot of the large existing farms utilized the Conservation District and needed them too. Over my career, I've probably, 300 or 400 different farms that are running around in this county, whether they're still in existence, I don't know. But they sure benefited, and so did all of us from the Conservation District. And I'm here to say, vote for the rates and charges. They're a non-regulatory agency that helps agriculture. If we want agriculture in this county, we need the Thurston Conservation District. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you for coming tonight, sir. Okay, so Mr. Al Wald, how you doing there? And then after that is Doug Rushton.
Greetings, and thank you for providing the opportunity to give me some thoughts.
Can you state your name and first and last name? Sure.
Yes, Alan Wald. And I'm a commercial farm operator in Abba Witter Bay.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
And in fact, Dr. Florrie was our large animal vet for 20 years.
Good.
So I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One was that I worked on the Henderson Inlet Watershed Action Plan for 20, about 10 years. And that action plan had a lot of discussion, and some of it was pretty hot, about who was responsible for what parts of the water quality, the non-point pollution issues that were coming up. And the way it was resolved was utilities took on the stormwater issues, the county health took on the septic tank issues, and Conservation District took on the non-point pollution from the agricultural issues. And that was reinforced and adopted by the county commissioners, and it's been sort of the framework for a lot of the work that the Conservation District has done on non-point pollution. The stormwater utilities, you know, take money for their funds, funds for their programs, and the Conservation District was able to take the funds that the county gave them through the assessment and match grant money, and particularly bring the NRCS technical capability to the activities that they were bringing to the small farmers. And I wanted to emphasize that as a Conservation District, that when you call them, they come out to your place in a pickup truck, they walk the field with you, they talk to you about your operation, they talk to you about how to make things better for the water quality. And that's the results that we all appreciate, when you can actually take the money and put in positive developments on the ground. And so that's really what comes from their activity, and I support it completely. And I support the continuation of the assessment. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you so much, sir, for your words there. So is it Mr. Doug Rushton? Yeah, hi Doug. And then after that is Tony Wilson. Tony Wilson's next.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Doug Rushton. I'm a resident of the South Bay Area and a member of the Thurston Conservation Board of Supervisors since the mid-1990s, serving as chair for over 14 years. I'm here representing just myself. The community's support and need for the Thurston Conservation District has been clearly shown at the Thurston CED and the Board of Commissioners' public hearings and work sessions on rates and charges. Written and oral testimony has been overwhelmingly supportive and positive. Despite a campaign of misinformation, misdirection against the district and its staff, staff are persevering and continuing to do quality work. For example, interim executive director Sarah Moorhead was named 2018 Employee of the Year by a statewide association. I think that speaks highly of her reputation. To be certain, there's room for improvement, but the alleged wrongdoing and incompetence, there has been no evidence shown. Thurston County has many issues on its plate. The Thurston Conservation District has expertise and experience to help with. For example, the culvert replacements, habitat restoration, that sort of thing. Approving rates and charges will serve both the Board of County Commissioners and the Thurston CED Board of Supervisors constituents, along with the natural resources of the county and future residents. You've heard a lot of positive things about the district and what it can do. People trust Thurston Conservation District because it is a non-regulatory agency that fills a voluntary incentive-based niche in serving our community in a way no other entity can or does. It supports not only agriculture, but urbanites, forestry, and shellfish, and a whole bunch of other stuff. You don't have to have dirt on your fingernails to get help. Together, we can move forward for a better Thurston County. I strongly urge the Board of County Commissioners to approve the rates and charges funding for the Thurston Conservation District.
You bet. Thank you for your good words there, sir. So Doug, there you go. Tony, how you doing?
Good, how are you, bud?
Good to see you again. And after Tony is Mr. Bill Mumaw.
My name is Tony Wilson, and in the interest of full disclosure, I'm not a native of this county. My wife and I live in unincorporated Thurston County, just south of the airport, in Legislative District 35. I've lived in the northwest for over 30 years and the Puget Sound area for nearly 13. My youth was spent in Florida and North Carolina, about equally split. In North Carolina, I lived on the family farm, was involved in 4H and Future Farmers of America. I personally raised pigs, a prize-winning Jersey cow, and had some success in growing and selling peanuts, crops, and my own garden vegetables. I also fished and hunted in some of the most beautiful and productive wildlands in those two states. Today, I'm appalled at the ecological destruction that's being caused in both of them, in part due to poor management of the agricultural lands by large-scale farmers and animal production operations. We are all probably aware that the Conservation District system was established as a result of the incredible damage caused by the unwise farming practices that occurred in Oklahoma, precipitating the Dust Bowl. That catastrophic event destroyed a generation of farmers in that region, forever ruined a part of America's food production capacity, and set in motion the westward migration of the poorest farmers in our country, trying to find the means to feed themselves and their families. The state conservation commission here has been helping to assure that the agricultural lands and other elements of this awesome environment that we all love here is protected. They've done this by enabling the local conservation districts to work in partnership with farmers and other landowners to ensure better farming practices and improved environmental protection practices. The Thurston Conservation District staff works as hard as they know how, within their mandate, with the available staff and funding, to ensure that the overall agricultural, aquacultural, and recreational elements of this region are protected to ensure against a similar fate to those I've described before. As with us all, they make mistakes. Like us, they do all that they can where they are with what they have. And I respect that organization for that reason. They don't give up, they don't quit, they persevere and continue to work toward the goal undaunted. In nearly 50 years of working myself and supervising others, I've picked up on one enduring basic tenet of the structure of workplaces. Supervisors manage, set the tone, and set policy. Staff is charged with implementation. This universal and very clear-cut premise forms the basis for every successful organization. When you consider the worthiness of the Thurston Conservation District to receive the full amounts of rate and charges funding that will guarantee its survival, please take that into account, restore that funding, in turn, helping to restore the functionality of the Thurston Conservation District. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony. It's good to see you. Next is Mr. Bill Mumaw. How you doing, sir? And after that is Phyllis, did you want to come up to the podium? Okay? Sure, sure. And after Bill is Lisa, is it Ornstein?
I'm Lisa.
No? Okay. And then after that is Kevin Hamlock? Oh, Ham? Hanock?
Hancock.
Okay, yep, after Bill, okay?
Sure. My name is Bill Mumaw. I live in South County. I have a farm that I have owned since 1970. My farm is in two parcels. So some of the people have made the remark about $5 not being much, and I agree, $5 is not much. But they should attend commission meetings and listen to the requests for money that you people get all the time, and especially the legislative mandates that you get that were not funded mandates, and you automatically have to figure out where the money comes from. So I'm not opposing the $5 at this point, but frankly, there's a question about what breaks the camel's back. The issue I have is this is the first time I've attended a meeting in regard to the Conservation District. So I'm reading that, here is a calculated amount, but this doesn't tell me what is the current calculated amount, or what it is that you are being requested to do. So I would like to find out what that is eventually. And then the other thing is that an exhibit D, Spending Plan and Revenue Estimates, and it lists only the cities. So is there a spending plan and a revenue for the county, for those of us who are in the county? So this doesn't list the county, so I'm hoping that my two parcels are not going to get charged. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Bill. It's good to hear your words there. So Kevin, did you want to come forward?
Yep, sure. Hi, I'm Kevin Hancock. I live in the urban growth area of Olympia. And I work for a government agency that regulates water quality. I'm here speaking for myself, not for the agency. And we use the Conservation District to keep us from having to put weight on top of small farmers, hobby farmers, regular farmers, on the regulation agenda. It's very important that we have this tool, which has come in very handy repeatedly. So the funding is very important for us as an agency, but also the citizens of this county, because of the pollution that can be created by one small person not knowing how to properly take care of their animals or their small little farm. That's it.
All right. Thank you so much, Kevin. Good to hear you. Okay, so that's the listed names. Is there another list by chance there? Remember anybody? I'm just making sure I got all my lists out of the way that sign in. Okay, good. By show of hands, and one at a time, who would like to come to the podium and speak? And I'll call you forward one at a time. Can I go with Trish first, and then... Okay, Trish, you're first. Come on up. And then again, sir, just state your first and last name, and where you're generally from the county.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Trish Carlson, I live in the Niskuale Reach, and I am here tonight representing the Niskuale Henderson Shellfish Production District stakeholders and that group. And we're here to support the Thurston Conservation District's rates and charges. They have been exemplary and, quite frankly, have been one of the major impetus in water quality improvement in both Henderson, mostly Henderson Inlet and Niskuale Reach. And we actually have some work going on right now, where these rates and charges, if continued, will be helpful in helping supplement some of the revenues necessary to get some of this work done. And we implore you to go ahead and sustain this and get it going. And we'd like the participation to remain the same that's been through the years with the Shellfish Production District, and want to thank you for all you've done. Thanks.
Thanks for your words tonight, Trish. And sir, Eric, you want to come up? And then again, state your name, first and last name. And then again, state your name, first and last name, and where you're at generally from the county.
Oh, Eric Johnson, southwest Thurston County resident. Family's been in the state since the eighteen hundreds, fourth-generation farmer, dairy farmer out in southwest Thurston County. My wife and I bought two hundred and, or one hundred and eighty acres and got it up to two fifty, and, you know, we got that big debt load to carry. I don't know what property taxes right now are, two thousand dollars a month, just to support that one part of our farm. Used to be that we would have nutrient management inspection, and I didn't want our nutrient management cop to show up unless the TCD staff was there. Dave Nygaard, you know, he was a real resource ally, could tell the nutrient management police, you know, things that I couldn't, because he was more educated and skilled, you know? I got asked to sit on the board of TCD and basically sat there for about six months, learning, seeing what was going on, and had some real concerns, you know, started asking questions, didn't become very popular, you know? I felt I've acted within my scope and duties as an appointed official, you know, doing due diligence, investigating potential areas of concern. Been doing my best to practice good governance and dutyary responsibilities to the taxpayers. You know, try to make the best decisions, legislative decisions, to serve the interest of the public. I have some real concerns with how the past programs, Wyre thirteen's been handled, you know. I've, we've had, myself and Richard McAmire, have had lots of rocks and sticks, name-calling at us, but we were just trying to look out for the public interest. And it's really funny, because the, where I met Richard McAmire was at a TCD-sponsored event. I went to see what, if the district was actually getting anything done, and it was at a grow-your-own-seed garden, and we had paid to have a speaker there, and here was Richard, that's where I met him, who had a lot of food, and myself. So I didn't really feel that was the best use of taxpayers' dollars to, you know, have one person there, and myself. Thought that maybe we could do better, could do better. It was my vision to have four technical staff on board to service voluntary stewardship program and other, you know, provide goods and services. I am heartbroken that Executive Director has decided to cancel the soil program. The larger-scale farmers use the soil program to find out the nutrients in our soil, and the district staff's decided to cancel it because it doesn't serve them and help them with their paycheck.
Thank you so much for your good words there, sir. Thank you. Okay, just one more time, last call, by show of hands, individually, if there's anybody that'd like to come to the podium to speak to the board and testify. Okay, seeing no one, that concludes the open testimony portion. Now, ask the commissioners any follow-up questions of Sarah or Romero or staff or anybody that you might want to facilitate a question or answer.
Are we going to have a follow-up meeting on this particular issue later?
Right, we are, for later. But if you had, for the general public, did you have anything you wanted to ask Sarah or Romero?
I don't.
Any clarification?
Yes, I do have a question. Maybe Sarah could answer this, or Mr. Johnson might be able to answer.
Nope, just Romero or Sarah, because the general public's already spoken. So I'll just go to this.
Okay. Could you explain what went on Thursday at the scheduled meeting? What happened there? This last Thursday?
Do you have any?
Be more specific.
Well, no, the meeting, it's my understanding the meeting got canceled. How was that? Was it a scheduled meeting? How did that all take place?
And you're talking about our Thursday fifteenth Board of Supervisors meeting?
Yes.
That meeting did take place at the Conservation District office.
It did?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's your question?
That's all I have. I had heard it hadn't taken place.
So it did happen?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Any questions?
No.
I have none, Sarah, so, and Romero, so it's not, none for me. So the next step is to ask the board if we want to move to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the public hearing is closed. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Commissioners, before you adjourn, just for the benefit of the public, the next steps, I have a schedule.
Next step, sorry.
I have a scheduled follow-up meeting tomorrow morning here in this room at nine thirty, where you consider all the public testimony you received today, as well as the written testimony you have received at the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen public hearing, as well as today, for two days here in November twenty, two thousand and eighteen. And considering the timelines the county treasurer needs to implement, whether you would like to implement or not, the rates and charges, that that decision needs to be taken place next Tuesday, November twenty-seventh.
On the twenty-seventh?
On the twenty-seventh, November.
Okay, that's the next time.
So, and that will be the next opportunity you will have as a board to take a formal action on this.
At two in the afternoon.
Two in the afternoon.
I'm sorry, tomorrow morning at nine thirty, there will be a?
A follow-up meeting here in this room.
Follow-on discussion from this discussion tonight amongst ourselves in the open table that you normally see, where we'll be talking about it a little bit more.
And tomorrow morning, no, the public will not be allowed to testify tomorrow morning. Is more than welcome to attend and observe the discussion the commissioners will have.
And on the twenty-seventh, we plan to make a full-blown decision one way or the other. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
It's been moved to second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.